Evening. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Columbia Board of Selectment Order this evening, Tuesday, May 17th, in year 2022. Once again, the rules for a hybrid public meeting, you can tend in person or electronically through the Zoom. Information provided in this agenda contains a link to access the meeting electronically. It's also on our website. If you miss this meeting, we do them every two weeks. Public can view via the internet. Your input should have been 24 hours prior. But if you're on the internet on Zoom or you are in attendance and during the audience of citizens, you'd like to make comments and you are called upon, please raise your hand. And when called upon, whether it's in person or on Zoom, state your name and your address so we can record your comments. All the, all the selectmen, oh, Lisa's not here, is she on?
She's here.
Oh, you came in, wait, just.
I was here.
Since all the selectmen are here, I do not have to say, keep your video on and your voice on. So, since we've already done the pledge of allegiance, do we need to do it again? First, second order of business, move to approve the agenda as presented. Any concerns, anybody looking to move anything, add anything? Wonderful. No discussion, all those in favor, agenda? Thank you. Approval of the amendments I moved to approve for a select on regular meeting minutes for May 3rd, 2022. Any discussion? Any more time? All those in favor? Audience of citizens. Anybody, anything that's not on the agenda? Good, thank you, anybody in the line? Everybody waving their hand and chat?
We have two written, this is what we could address there on.
Okay, no business, new business, Columbia Lake Association Summer Solstice.
That was actually pulled at the last minute, they decided that they really didn't have time to pull together this year, so they're not going to. They were going to have it on our town beach, but it created some logistic issues that they weren't ready to manage, so they just.
Thanks. We're not having a summer solstice?
It may be somewhere private, but it won't be on a town. Oh, yeah. I did cancel that.
You got a lot of power.
There will be a concert, but it'll be on a private lawn where you can hear it from the beach. But the CLA decided insurance and amenities too much to deal with, to have it at the town.
Okay.
You can still go here. Or go out.
Thank you, since I don't live near there or have a boat, kind of. Okay, so let's see, discussion regarding June 10th, 2022 National Holiday. Listen, I put this on there, I put it on there, the state passed it as a state holiday and stuff, there's concern. We've been, you know, asked about it, not, not aggressively or anything, it's obviously an important time in history of this country. I don't think we ever right wrongs, but certainly to bring to the forefront of what, what that dig marks for people in this country, all people. All people, certainly deep down for some more than others, but you know, it's a so the state passed it as a state holiday, national holiday, so I don't know, I, I, they already have 14 holidays in town. I think we're very lenient, we're very good to them. I think what I'd like is we get to discuss it now and think about it, what your thoughts are. I mean, it's here, everybody saw it on there before, then if you have thoughts now, we can go over it. But it has been. Okay, what'd they say?
Police decided for right now, they'd like to not touch the holiday because the holiday schedule is already approved for this year. If you want to seriously consider changes, they said do it next year. But for most people, they said, if you want to celebrate, we recommend you take it as a vacation or, or personal day. Because they didn't want to give up any of their other holidays. If one were to be given up, it would probably be President's Day or Columbus Day. If it was going to be a swap, but for right now, the consensus is don't do it. Take, take the day off if you'd like to honor.
Anybody have any thoughts different, or we should just table it? As it comes up?
So what are the towns doing, what's going on?
Some added another holiday, me and CEO, Manchester. Give it as an additional national holiday. But I don't have a poll of all the towns. Look into it more detail next year.
So, please make a note that when we're setting the schedule for next year, I think we do it. Anybody else, discussion, good?
Private companies still have 14, they don't just say.
Yeah, all right. 7.3 Route 66, Hunt Road, West Road, proposed pavement marking revision. Here's, I have two letters here and they're fine, they're concerned with the traffic out on Route 66 and especially Hunt and West intersection there. You know, one says, we don't, we keep ignoring the problem. It's a little, it seems like it, but we keep going to the state time and time and time again. And finally, the state has asked us if we would consider looking at what they're, what they think would be the a solution to the problem. And I thought, I thought the same thing when I was looking at it. Either you squeeze it down to one, you know, two lane, one lane each way and you don't allow for passing on the right-hand side. Or you allow turning lanes with passing lanes on the outside. Well, the state came back and they would like to redo the markings and stuff and put that signage up where they are going to have turning lanes and outside passing lanes for those, you know, to pass. Problem is that even if you're in a turning lane and somebody's coming up behind you on the right-hand side, people have to learn that oncoming turning lanes, those vehicles have to get out of your way so you can see what's in back of them. I had a friend who died on a motorcycle there, was doing that, passing on a car that was turning left. The car, oncoming car was also turning left, didn't see him in back of that car and went out in front of him. My friend is now deceased. So we, this is they, this is what they want to do, we work with them, I already said, yes, we'll, we'll take it, but I want to sit down and talk to the traffic authority for the state and see what kind of signage they're going to put, make sure hopefully does a trick, talk you know, may, I don't know about a flashing yellow light, but make sure that whatever we do there, that it's crystal clear, you have to.
They're like, they're going to widen it? It's enough for me. They would have to widen it.
I, yeah, I, that's another thing, I think they, I think they made it, consider it, well, I want to sit down and talk with them right off the bat.
I'm disappointed with the proposal. Obviously, anything is better and it just appears to be something that they did on Route 6, but we've been begging for years to have them come in and try to put in some sort of a traffic signal to protect people. I don't know what the, what the opposition is to it. What's the concern about having a signal area, is it going to back up traffic for Hebron or something? A pretty substantial distance between Hebron and Hunt Road, I just can't understand why with the lives that have been lost here, we can't have some sort of a, a traffic signal.
Yeah, no, I understand it and we'll ask them that, we should, at least a flashing yellow or something that highlights the problem. But I got to tell you, Bill, even at the center of the town, when people come up to go left on 87 or right on, you know, left on 87 South or left on 87 North, you know, they come up and they nose-nose to each other and they have to go like this, basically.
That's a very difficult.
It is, I've asked the state to put markings where people pass by, bump, you know, rear to rear and then turn into the lane, you can see it better. And they said, no, we're not putting the markings like that, I don't know what the opposition is. This is better than this is a start because they haven't ignored us on every request we've ever done. They said, well, there's, you know, there's not enough accidents there, we could just, not enough fatalities, you know, one fatality is too much if you ask me. So they're doing something, but we will sit down and talk with them and say, hey, we get it, but we, you know, it has to be laid out correctly because even here it's not, it's terrible. Well, that's the other thing.
That's the main, I'm distracted.
I'm distracted.
Yeah. So I know, are you here for this, are you here for this issue? All right, would you like to say something to this?
I would.
I would like you to stand or just, you can sit, tell us your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Paul Shepard, two bears and I sent my emails. I'm never meant to say that the town isn't doing anything, I think the state isn't doing anything, but if it sounds like I said the town isn't, then.
Yeah.
I intend that. So I live in, in Hollywood, I go through that intersection all the time, I have young kids, I have 16-year-old driver right now, it's terrifying. As to that whole passing thing that you can turn onto, so we're sitting at where we the car was turning, waiting to enter that intersection, a car was turning left onto West Street. An F-350, huge truck goes blowing around that car that was sitting there waiting to go left, almost hit our front end of the car and we weren't noticing to the intersection, we were stopped at the stop sign. It's not widening, if they're going to install a passing lane, which I 100% support, that intersection needs to be widened. I've been watching it lately because I've got this 16-year-old who just started driving. So I start, the, the big problem is to me, that hill that you come up when you're coming from the center of town toward Hebron. When you take a left out of West Street and try to go towards Hebron from Hunt Road, you can't see what's coming up that hill. And by the time, if you make that turn and sometimes you've started to accelerate and you can't stop now during the intersection, you have to go. That car is on you, could hit you coming up that hill because they fly. We need to mark those roads and say, you've got to slow down, there's got to be some notification to people who, you're, you're driving along Route 66 and you think you're on this nice country road and everything's far along and you drive too fast on it. I think we're probably all guilty of that. So you're driving along that country road and all of a sudden it becomes a dangerous intersection. All of a sudden, you come up on people, there are cars backed up, sometimes there are three and four cars turning there.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, I'm in that intersection all the time, it's really kind of terrifying.
I never let my son live just down.
My kid's the same thing.
You're not allowed to take left, you have to go right.
That's what I told my kids. You're not allowed to go straight. My daughter, my son doesn't so much, so, yeah, so, I, I mean, I think there's more that they can be doing, I think a flashing light would be a really good idea. And I understand that the accident that happened on Saturday, I don't know if this is rumor, but that the woman never stopped and she went right into the intersection, maybe if it was flashing light, she knew that it was a stop. Because you would have seen it for a while.
She was, she was coming on what street?
I'm not positive, my husband was there and saw it right after it happened, I did not see it at all. I think she was coming from Hunt Road, but I'm not 100% positive, we have to ask the state, please.
I, I, not only the light, but I would also like a, a permanent speed sign there, what you're actually doing. I will tell you, sometimes I look at that and I look and it flashes, not there, other places, and I'm doing maybe 42 in a 35. I slowed down, I think I'm going to slow enough, but there's a reason that it's 35. So I, I'd like to.
And maybe they could slow, and maybe they could slow the speed there, maybe it doesn't have to be 45 going through there, maybe if you got that flashing light, we reduce the speed to 35 or something, it happens all the time, we see it all the time. There's more the state can do, is what I'm trying to say. And if it costs them a little money, there've been a lot of deaths in that intersection, really horrible ones.
You know, maybe we need a letter writing campaign.
I am happy to help, happy to help, good at letters, happy to help.
I'm thinking of traffic lights, you know, flashing red light, just.
They do that.
There's one, Hennepin Road, it just, I don't think, I don't even, sometimes you don't even see it, you know?
Well, the thing about it, I will, the lights are fine with me because now technology, you can trip those. So it's not green, red, green, red, green, red. Where you're, you're sitting there or, you know, if there's no traffic coming from the other ways and nobody's trying to turn, you don't stop and go, oh my goodness, why is there a stop here? Because, you know, you get aggravated, if there's no other cars, why are you stopping? There's technology now that can pick you up off the road sensor or off the beam sensor, I, there's a lot of things you can do. I, I thank you for your input, listen, tell peoples what the people, what they're looking for and give us ideas and everything, we, we will be talking to the state.
I'll share all our neighbors' concerns about this, it's not just me and Caroline's also a neighbor, it's not just us.
Yeah, no, I understand, you know, every, I get them all, I get every 911 call and I go, oh my God, oh my God. You know, it's again, it's again, it's again, so I
It was the sightline, I agree, the sightline, it's horrible, it's, you can't, yeah. Well, and even coming up the, as you're coming up, there's that, it just.
And the other thing is.
There's also the intersection that shows this. That's what tells you, there's, I'm sorry, there's a little sign that you see that, the little caution and the cross that says there's an intersection coming up.
Yeah. The worst thing about it is the sightline is not bad. If they stay at the speed limit, that's number one, but just trying to get out there, you look left and then you look right this way and then all of a sudden you start going a little bit, you look back and there's somebody screaming up that hill and you look, the last thing, you have looked left.
I look left again and still I've had people scream up the hill.
I have actually pulled out four times in 90 count and pulled into the parking lot.
Yes.
Yeah.
It was all the time.
That's the ditch, yeah.
Do it all the time.
Ian, you had your hand up and then we'll get you, Scott.
Ian, Donick, why don't we play I total one car at that intersection. Mercifully, I was not hurt, but I came out of Hunt Road and a guy coming from Columbia Center came, you know, around the corner, and he came so fast, I'm there so long until he was behind me with my friend, the cordial, on his car. He just
And they come up fast.
And they come up fast. But I don't think a turning lane is a good idea for this reason. If you're pulling out of West Street and you know, you, you can't, you and pulling out of any, any place in that intersection, you have to look at the commuter lot because there's, there's a business that comes out of there. The commuter lot. Now you've got, if you have passing lanes and you already do have passing lanes in practice, that's four cars. The parking lot is five, the business is six and the road directly across is seven cars. You have to watch in order to get out, that's really too many. Your only real solution is to narrow it down so you can't pass or put a stoplight.
Yeah.
And you could make it a trip look. You know?
I, I thought this, yeah, I, I honestly, I do agree with you, I would narrow it so you cannot pass on the right-hand side, okay? But the signs have to be there for that too, because somebody like this, you look up and you're headed for the back bumper and stuff. I think the outer lanes, people will know it's there and they'll start gunning it a little bit faster in some instances, so we'll, we'll have to look at all, we should put a rotary like last night.
I love rotaries, I know people, I think they're the best things ever. The one down in Salem works great, that was a lot of cars.
I'd like to call on Scott Hadad, the deputy chief, I believe, Scott?
That's right, good, a good evening, everybody, Scott Hadad, deputy chief, fire department, also taxpayer to Johnson Road. We've been out there numerous times and I, I understand what everybody's saying about traffic lights and turn lanes. My opinion from being out there for the past 20 years, and I was at your friend's accident on the motorcycle that day as well, drove into Hartford Hospital. I believe turn lanes are, are something. I know for a fact they work on Route 6 because when I started 25 years ago, we were out on Route 6 all the time. We didn't really have an opportunity tonight to pull any data for you for accidents. Not all accidents are injury accidents, but there's a lot of accidents. But we are just not out on Route 6 anymore with the turn lanes that are put in. Turn lanes wouldn't have helped the, the two Yukon kids that came off of West Street, maybe the flashing light would have. Okay, turn lanes really aren't going to help you coming, you know, the, the cars that race out of the center of Columbia. It's hard pulling out on Hunt Road. I personally avoid that intersection as well because it just makes me nervous sitting there, I'm just like waiting for something to happen. But turn lanes, at least that's, that's the majority of the accidents we go to at that intersection, yes. When, you know, Mrs. Donick pulled out and somebody was speeding, um, that, you still have that potential. But most of the accidents that we go to there are from people, the sitting ducks just sitting there waiting to turn left. This, this weekend, we were there again and, and the gentleman lives right on West Street. And I could just imagine how many times he sat there in the middle of that road waiting. And I think narrowing the road down is, you're going to have more rear-end accidents. Because again, people just don't pay attention and we know that's the root of the problem. But by giving the turn lanes and other people can just keep going, it worked on Route 6. The two turn lanes, when you're, you're coming out of Columbia and then if somebody comes out of Hebron, instead of being offset at that intersection, both to go left, one to West Street, one to Hunt Road, the turn lanes at least line you up. So when you're sitting there, now you're lined up with the car in front of you, you can see better down the side of that car. Because your friend, unfortunately, those cars were offset, the person came, he came around the back on his motorcycle and they turned. Maybe if those cars were lined up, they could have seen down 66 towards Hebron and seen him coming. I, I, I'm glad to hear the turn lanes. I, I understand people want a traffic light because that would make everything go away, right? But that, the traffic light, I don't think they're ever going to do. If they did the traffic light, that would absolutely help people pulling out of Hunt Road and West Street. But if they did it the other way, if that light, they're just green, you're still going to have people turning left on the green lights, they're not going to trip because there's nobody at West Street or Hunt Road. Unless they did a huge intersection there with turn, you know, green arrows for everybody, every time somebody took a left, I don't think they're going to, they're going to do that. I'm highly in favor of the, the turn lanes, like I said, at least you're going to get lined up, people are going to get to pull out of the, the travel path. The blinking light, maybe for the people coming out of Hunt and West, they'll know that there's a stop sign there. But I agree, when you're going down 66 towards Hennepin, I don't think anybody even sees that yellow light, they're just driving. Unless anybody has any questions for us in the fire department, we've been out there way too much, I'm glad to see, at least they're ready to do something. Probably have to widen it a little bit to put the, uh, just the travel lanes in with turn lanes and I'm hoping that reduces us going out there quite so much.
Okay, thank you. Well, I appreciate everybody's input on this, believe me, I know it's a hotly contested, you know, life-altering when something happens out there, so we will move forward and set up meetings with the state. We will do, so, all right, any other discussion? Thank you. Next is the tax collector's suspense list, I move to approve the recommendation to transfer uncollected property taxes to the suspense tax book as listed. Martin, tell us where did that go for us?
So these are both auto, real estate and personal property taxes that the tax book feels are, are old and cannot be collected. They're put in a suspension list, they don't go away, but they're taking off the active role that they feel can be collected. And it happens every year, if you want to try to buy a car, it'll trigger and you'll have to pay your old taxes. But what, what mostly this involves is people that have moved out of state and they didn't pay their last car bill, it's mostly car taxes. It's $6,459 in car taxes, $90 of real estate tax, a 72 of personal property. So it's mostly car taxes, people have left.
It seems like a lot, is that, is it a lot or is it just about the same every year? It seems like a lot of.
I can't remember what it was last year, but.
He said, I don't think it's really $6,000.
Right, there's not that many people.
And I want them to live in town.
And it's going back to 17, right?
Right.
How old then?
Starts in 2017, actually 2015. There's one.
So most of them are, you know, five years old. Last year was $9,504, 72 cents.
Any more discussion, all those in favor? School needs a new concrete pad for long jump, high jump and the shot foot path, so I move to accept the bid for penalty builders. Lorario Building Construction for $30,000, $30,306 to provide labor materials for a concrete pad located at the Horace Ford School Track, the long jump, high jump and the two shot foot paths.
So it says current account balance is $38,000.
That's what they had in their capital cap.
Right, so how much, so they go put the pad, but there's going to be work obviously after to be done, is that going to be able to be covered? You know, covered all?
For $8,000?
I would think so, right?
Because I think they have an existing long jump where the sand, they redo the sanding, you know, at the landing pit.
Yeah.
High jump, you bring out your own bladder for the high jump and then the shot foot, you actually hope it lands on the rest. So against the grass and they can mark accordingly, so I think it's going to be okay.
What were the other bids?
That's why it's coming to board, so they can only give one bid. The big challenge right now is, there's a flat out.
Which, my question is, the contractor in the bid didn't say how long the polls could fall when they actually were going to.
They're ready to do it now.
They are, oh, okay.
They, they've been wanting to do it for quite a while.
So they. But it'll, it will be, obviously, there's not much left this season, right, because the old tracks open for the year, right?
I think they, they had a temporary system for this year, I think despite the second track time next week.
So they, do they, do we know this guy?
They're out of commentary, they're low. They've been around a very long time.
So we know they're.
They've been around a very long time. Any other discussion, all those in favor? Thank you. Thank you. Economic development.
Yes, I asked to have this put on the agenda. Rob Helsch is working very hard on this. I took the table. I expected it to be here tonight, so I don't know.
On that, just, I think that three and anybody else who wants to be, I'd like to be involved in that idea. I get calls every week from the owner of that plaza down there. And he, I truly think that that place could be like just a a gym for us if it's done correctly. But he's out of New York. He's not here all the time. And he's actually touched base with a couple of restaurants to try and get them in there and stuff. But I do think we need to light this thing up and I'm glad it, Rob is going to spearhead it. You're on board. I'd love to be a part of it. So that's.
I think you're right. I think Rob's going to include you in the discussion as far as.
Yeah.
Kennedy Exchange has moved to a different location than the city that I did it at other day. Just, he's a computer repair.
Yeah, he does mine.
Yeah. Just to give him, you know, more business, give him his name and paper, just.
Can I say it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can give him a date if you want to do that.
Whatever. We just, they had an article in the paper about the plaza. Not too long ago. Always revitalizing, trying to get people in there. Okay. Look forward to putting that back on the agenda though. Columbia Lake, approval for a no-wake buoy at the end of the boat launch. I moved to install a third no-wake buoy at the end of the boat launch. This is in the approach from, you're coming along and the houses and stuff are on your starboard side. That's right. So starboard side. You're passing, not the Rams place. No, yeah, well Carmen's, but a couple of others, it's just not for Carmen. But we'd like them to slow down there before they get to the first.
The weight goes.
It really does push it out there and as the erosion goes on these walls and stuff, first of all, it falls into the lake and secondly, it's a large cost because they do erode over time.
Also protecting our pier.
And we're protecting our pier. So I'd ask that we put another one in there and just kind of keep them nice and easy coming into the pier area.
Then you'll have three, two at the moorings and then one so that you leave the launch and approach the launch at.
Be the channel, leave the channel. Any other discussion?
DEP says it's not a channel.
Yeah, DEP said, don't worry about my. Any more discussion? Great. All those in favor? No appointments and reservations, it's cut. Yeah.
I just have a question about the no-wake boom. When George was here and talked about buoys and stuff like that, he said you had to apply at the state.
That's for a channel boom. That's where we got in trouble earlier on. We're not making a channel. We're just designating a no.
So you can, it's okay with the state if you plunk no-wake.
We didn't apply for the state for the one at the Aradoni Beach, right, and the two at our mooring.
How was the state involved in that?
Then only if you make a navigation channel, state has to be involved.
And that's the key to navigation. Because you're kind of admitting hazards and, you know, and then it has to be charted, even inland waterways have to be charted.
It's a shame that the.
Couldn't make a decision without that.
They made us pull a channel marker a while back. They tell the story down there.
Bottom line is, the more they stay away from us, the better the world.
I agree.
We're still going to be required.
Okay. Town administrators report. What I want to do is just highlight some of the, I know there's been issues going on within town and a lot of good strategy with the state police and Trooper DeCarle as well as to move this schedule around and help us with different issues. And I just asked him, I said, can you report just on a typical couple of weeks of what you've been involved with? And there's some things I want the board just to know. He was involved in assisting the DCF investigation. He was involved with a student that was threatened at East Con. He was involved in a traffic accident on Route Six, which we actually, he was also involved in 66. But assisting detectives regarding a death in town in the investigation. He assisted a fire marshal painting with a car accident fire report that the fire marshal made. So Trooper DeCarle got that for him. He assisted the DPW director with illegally parked trailer. Multiple dealings with problem tenants at Dartmouth, including arrests with three arrest warrants. And also suspicious person was reported going door to door. Turns out that they were selling solar without any penalty. So he told me I could cease and desist and they did penalty. And he did 10 traffic stops over the last two weeks. And just wanted to kind of give you an idea what kind of activities are going on. Then I also included Eastern Highland Health District COVID-19 update, which unfortunately we're back on the spike with this latest variant. We're hoping there's good weather and us getting outside. Send it back.
These numbers mean nothing.
Yeah.
Because people who test themselves, they're not on the numbers.
Right, so I think it's mainly they're tackling based upon hospitalization.
So heads up, according to my daughter, it's not COVID, that's the problem, it's influenza A.
Right. And it might be because we don't wear masks this year.
Well, and it's because masks actually work against the flu.
Right.
They help.
No, they weren't.
Help stop it.
Yes, the flu, the droplet too much bigger. So she's like, yeah, that people stopped wearing masks. They've been inundated with masks. She's in the ER, so just immediate.
Exciting note. I also included the whole legislative update. I just wanted to highlight a few things. And this is my involvement with CCM, our lobbyist group, and COS, which is also a small town lobbyist group. They were able to get $75 million funded towards HVAC upgrades in school systems. So that'll be through a school construction grant program that'll be available this year, 2023. I notified the superintendent that this passed and wanted to make sure that our engineering plans are in place and that they want to apply for the beginning of an HVAC program to cool certain parts of the school. They need to jump on that because I think that's $75 million of a fast. Also, project, I head up the land use commission for CCM. And for 15 years, I've been trying to get the tax appeal a proposition on contingency arrangements for tax appeals with our commercial accounts. We were finally successful. It was a miracle. And one big help was the mayor of Hartford worked with myself and the lobbyists to actually get that passed. And what happens was, if it's a contingency arrangement, which means the company splits any savings by taking us to court with the contingency company. So the contingency company just throws comps in the proceedings that they just go out and grab. What our arrangement said is you need to do an actual appraisal. You have to hire a professional appraisal to tell what your company's value is. Not just the comp of a wimpy storage building equals a heavy-duty manufacturing cement building. So that was passed. They amended the requirement that it's only for properties over a million dollars, but that's our major properties. And they have 120 days to file an appeal instead of just 90. But I just want to say that this is a huge help to us because this is a problem that we faced and will be facing this year again. Also, the opioid settlement, we were able, there's a 32, a 16-member, 32-member advisory board that was created on how to spend the opioid money that's coming to all the states. And we now have 16 members that represent municipalities and a co-chair. What we are worried about is that that municipality is representing on this board. It would be skewed as to how they spend the money. We want to make sure it helps all-size towns.
All-size towns are impactful, guys.
Right, it's not just a big city problem. So we were successful there. Cancer presumption, that was the biggest scare we faced. Karma said that this, if this had passed, it could bankrupt the insurance agency for the state. And what this meant was, we lobbied successfully to get the legislature to reject the original bill that would have created a rebuttable presumption for any firefighter. It would go straight to workman's comp if they get cancer, no matter why they got cancer, no matter what their role was as a firefighter. So the challenge was, it's all volunteers and it would have even covered even if you never went into the interior of a fire and got cancer, it would be an automatic workman's comp case. The problem is, we're willing to pay, and this is all states and towns, if you're hurt as a fireman, we're willing to cover. That's not going to be debated. But to give presumptive guarantee, it's a workman's comp that'll be covered no matter what. I think there were 16 types of cancer that would be automatically covered. It would just be financially devastating. So what we've done instead is created a fund, a firefighting cancer relief account that'll be funded by all the cities and municipalities. And it'll be similar to the PS, post-traumatic stress syndrome, that is that we're using as well. A statistical straight workman's comp. So we're trying to fund that. And then I included a whole list of important bill updates. You can see all the ones that passed and failed. And the main reason the ones that failed were because of lobbying efforts on the point of CCM costs. If you want to read those details on the investment meter.
Did you want to update on the passings on Route 66?
That's down in. Oh, okay, so I can watch that. But there's a passing zone that we want to bring your attention on 66. We want 66 east.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we talked about it last time out. We are, the state has come to us about the rumble strips in the middle and stuff. And we talked about painting, we're trying to get that painted. I went down there and looked at it again and that passing zone actually is right in front of the main moose where you come out of there is Drysland. And it's bad enough as it is, they have an incline with their driveway. And I talked to the owner there, he said, you know, I really took out the grade in that measurably when you hit that. So, and it still has a bit of an incline there that you have to really push it to get your car out of it. So when you start, you're basically committed, you know? And then if you look to the left coming out of the main moose, that's where the passing zone is right there and it ends right there in front of the main moose. And the corner starts up there where the garage is. And the American Women's Fitness Club and the, it used to be Jehovah's Witness House Worship up there. So it's, you come around that turn, you hit a passing zone and you end at the main moose. Well, people are flying there also. So we went to the state and asked the Department of Transportation, who's doing the rumble strips. We'd like to take that out of there and they said.
But we want the rumble strips.
We want to know passing.
It is a passing zone, we want to limit the passing.
Correct. No passing. We want to make it, and they said, we're not in charge of that. It's a different part of the Department of Transportation. You could add.
So now we're dealing with a different part of transportation department that we were sent to. I sent them all the accident data. We had one accident, I think 2022 was actually a motorcycle accident. I think, yeah. Three accidents with no injury, 21, five accidents, 23 accidents with injuries, six without, and 19, one accident with injuries, eight without injuries.
And then before that, main moose hadn't opened yet, so it's just picking up over there. So we're growing after that.
Right, so I just wanted you to be aware of that. That's all I have.
Just, I just looked at the map. It does not seem like there's enough to safely pass.
No, I just drove the other day. It shouldn't be passing.
No.
No way.
I never even realized, I travel it all the time and I've never, ever, and I've passed people. I have never even thought of passing anybody.
So is the problem that people are passing, is that the?
I think it's the problem that people drive to fast and coming up on some of these just evening main moose or the physical therapy place or, you know, anybody pulling out there, coming upon some of Route 60.
Okay, some correspondence, AHM program report, the AHM program.
Yeah, it's just showing what they're up to. I thought one interesting thing in here was that they, they looked at economic development in Hebron. And actually, I can't even find where it was, but they, AHM went to a forum where Hebron was looking at economic development and wanted to know what kind of emphasis Hebron was looking for and how they were attracting different types of businesses and what they wanted is their focus. Plus, they highlighted that they had a whole curriculum with Columbia led by Sherry on mental health of elementary students and had sessions to learn about mental health and stress. You can help with feeling sad, mad, worried and identify trusted adults in their schools.
And then some other stuff from the chronicles. Okay. Budget transfers. Anybody, everybody okay? Any comments for correspondence right now? So it's the end of the year, so the moving things around. This one's not as bad as the last one. I made a motion to approve transfers in the amount of $531. Looks to be department to department, different different buckets in those departments, so. That's fine, it's just the housekeeping thing. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
So it's a war's Indian school, that all done?
It looks so nice. They fixed the ceiling, all the cracks.
That's good.
And we can get them to fix the ceiling and say, come up the church.
The same kind of situation.
Give you the.
Please.
Okay, I moved to approve the payment of bills, totally $88,265,41 cents. I'm saying that, we pulled one out. Yes, okay. So I looked at, prior to this, I pulled one out for $2,200 and some dollars to, for the American Business Telephone. I had some questions on the bill and stuff, so you'll see it in there, but we're actually approving.
Oh, so you can add to Justin.
I'm going to add to Justin. I like the bill. I didn't understand it, why we were paying for things. You know, they said, I looked at the narrator, narration and said, after six hours, we think it's a carrier problem. Why were we betting? Just.
You said that because I actually had a question on.
$1,804.
And then there's $323 of it.
There you go.
That was, I actually had, I looked at that earlier.
And we were, part of the reason that got so hairy and bizarre, we were being attacked outside. Company out of, like, it was Texas or something. Uh, outside, um, company out of, like, I think it was Texas or something, it was hitting us constantly. Uh, so we got an alert on that, and we were trying, we were trying to block them from our firewall. So we did, we successfully blocked.
So they were hacking at that?
They're trying to hack through that. No.
Tom, stay away.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to amend my motion, uh. To pay bills in the amount of eighty six thousand one hundred and thirty eight dollars and forty one cents.
So eighty six, one forty one, one thirty eight forty one, one thirty eight forty one.
Removing the American Business Telephone payment out of, two payments, totally twenty one hundred twenty seven dollars.
Yes.
Any other, any discussion?
Legal services for cards, is that for the, for the women?
Who else? Where is it? This month?
Well, you know, they're releasing, they found some bugs to come, you know, like an old predator for the Admiral Ashwell.
Really?
They're releasing now.
Australians brought the rabbit in to feed their people and now they don't have anything, so be careful.
That's saying, they got rid of purple loosestrife that way, which was climbing on the cars. They find.
Poor trees, man, just being attacked.
Well, the purple loosestrife was in the. Marches, and they found a beetle that only eats purple, bluestrife, and it's good.
No more discussion, all those in favor? Play on, all those in favor of paying the bills? Aye. Opposed? Okay, we paid the bills, thank you. Audience of citizens. It's good to see you here, sir, how are you? Yes, sir. Say your name.
Paul Tavala, three seven Lake Road. I have been a, a driver for sixty five years, it seems to me. What seems to be lacking today is the protocol of the road. There used to be years ago, until very recently. It was understood that road conditions like passing, uh, stuff like that, like if you wanted to make a. A left-hand turn, you tried to move over as far as you could to let somebody pass on the right. It doesn't mean you go eighty miles an hour. Uh, I've seen a lot of changes in that month of time, and I don't know what the answer is. What the best result would be is to, is to probably put lines on the road. Showing what would be the left-hand turn and what would be the passing. Uh, lights, useless, flashing light, useless, signs, useless. Uh, signs, after a while, you, you see a flashing sign or you see a, a blinking light, you just dismiss, it's not there anymore. So I think it's just a big waste of money, uh, the best thing I could think of is just put a line in the road. And try to maybe educate the people, you know, there is a protocol of the road, and it used to be sixty five years ago. It doesn't seem to be anymore, it's me first, get out of my way.
Thank you, Seth Phil. Anybody else in the audience? Anybody online?
Nothing in the chat.
Hands on the line, no, good, okay. Or member comments?
I found a walk with Park the other day, how nice.
It is very nice up there.
That's great.
And people are saying very good things about it.
So just a comment on you, this week, the sidewalk is going in. Around, around the possessions. And then we'll be able to grade it properly, some graphs and different trails.
We got the dirt is creating sandstorm.
Well, it's been.
The wind is creating.
Wind.
It's a wind. Pushing dirt everywhere.
You have sand out of.
But it's really, really nice.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're fine, thank you. I think I'm okay, usually I have something else, but I think I'm okay. Very good. Then I move to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor? All right. Seven fifty, what?
And you know my grandson.